All right, I'm calling the meeting of the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education to order. Are there any comments on? Okay, so we will recess to close session. Thank you.
We are reconvening to open session. Welcome to our meeting. My name is Dot Theodore. I have the honor of being the board president and my pronouns are she/her. We took no action and closed session. Moving on to approval of the agenda.
I would move that we approve the agenda if there's any change.
Amended six E.
I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, Mike, your vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so motion is passed. The agenda is approved. Mission statement, Mike.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form, www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after this start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on issues presented. Okay, we're moving on to reports from our bargaining units. Is nobody, okay. All right, then we will, are there any requests? Okay, no requests for public comments. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Would move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, are there any questions? All right, Mike, your vote, please.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to reports, discussion, and action items.
To move the personnel item to this point?
Oh, yes, thank you, yes, let's move that. All right, so.
Oh, good.
Okay, then let's back up. Yeah, hi, Mark, are you there? Okay.
Sorry, sorry, I'm three minutes late. You guys start really, you are punctual. So thank you, thank you for going back for me. I just wanted to say that myself and our E-board and bargaining team are very pleased with the way that negotiations went this round. If there ever a year where we needed just to end on a high note, it is this one. I'm looking at myself, disheveled, the first day of summer. And so this, this has been a tough year. You guys know that, everybody knows that, and it's just really nice to end on a high note. So we really are grateful for all the work that everybody up there at that table did in order to make this happen. We are going through the process. We brought it to our members overwhelmingly. They are very happy with what's happened with bargaining. So thank you, thank you. And I am on the teacher's schedule, so this will be my last board meeting for a little while. I wish everybody a very happy and safe couple months before we meet again in August. I might drop by if needed. And I do just have one summer project for you to work on. As I talked about before, I don't think I brought to the board, but we do have an HVAC issue at the high school. The HVAC in the 100 Hall has been out since January. It's been a very long process. I do appreciate the district keeping me informed, but really, we need that thing fixed. When we come back in August, it's going to be super hot, as you guys know. So let's do everything we can to get that done. And again, thank you, Board, for doing the job that you do. I know that it doesn't always seem like you're appreciated, but you really are appreciated by our membership. So thank you very much for everything you do, and I hope everybody has a good few weeks.
Thank you, Mark. Happy summer.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. Personnel.
For personnel report, today we have Mr. David Luongo. He was appointed by the board a few meetings ago for Director of Secondary Ed. Just as a reminder, he has brought forward a focus on anti-racist professional development and increased student participation on equity as coordinator of the Equity Team at Talon Pius Union High School District. He also serves as principal at San Andreas High School, where he has implemented restorative practices and counseling service to increase student and family engagement. If we could ask Dave to say a few words and welcome.
Thank you for the kind introduction. Oh, thank you. So nice. Pleasure to be with you all this evening and good evening, members of the board, Dr. Amati, executive board members, and Castro Valley community. It's an honor to be joining this team of dedicated, caring, and equity-focused administrators, educators, and leaders. On a personal note, I've been supporting students' communities in the Bay Area for over 20 years now. Really passionate about this work. I love what I do. I try to approach everything that I do with a caring, respectful approach, with a strong focus on equity and social justice. My career started out as an English teacher at Kennedy High School in Richmond, California. And so that really opened my eyes to some of the injustices in the educational system. And I carry that with me closely today. For the last 17 years as an administrator, I've tried to do the best I can to improve systems to support students as much as possible. So I look forward to bringing my experience, passion, leadership to your team of just caring, collaborative, and forward-thinking team members. So it's an absolute pleasure to be here. I really appreciate being part of the team, and I'm looking forward to the work ahead. I'm looking forward to get to know all of you as well a lot better. So thank you for having me and thank you for this opportunity.
Welcome to Castro Valley. Okay, now we'll move on to reports, discussion, and action items.
Our first item is our Wellness Center Council presentation and update. So Mr. McMaster is going to start us off. He's got a team with him.
Thank you very much and good evening. Ms. Amati gave me an introduction, so I'll start by introducing co-presenters. We have student Rising Senior who's here after school's already out. Two days before she goes on an international trip to help a community, as she described, Adriana Doniz. Adriana, I think. Her parents are here, Angel and Mary Ann. They came out to support, so I wanted to give them a shout out as well. And then we have Ms. Marion Meadows, our coordinator of Behavioral Health, that I know you all know that. But we're going to talk to you about our work this year on the district's Wellness Council and our triennial review of the wellness plan. So can I move this forward? So we're going to give you a snapshot. There was a lot of work that went into this process, a lot of people involved. And the three of us are going to present on, I think, some of the key pieces and be able to answer any questions that you have. So our agenda on the board, we'll see some of those main points that we're going to talk about. I'm going to ask Ms. Meadows to step in to talk about what our purpose has been this year and then with the work we did in the second half of last year.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Wellness Council purpose. I met many of you the first time we did the Wellness Council sort of revamp several years ago. So I'm going to start current and then talk a little bit about history. But since June 30th, 2017, our local wellness policy, this is required by law that at a minimum it has to include measurable goals for nutrition and education, physical activity, and other school activities that promote student wellness. Opportunities to participate in the development, implementation, and review and update of the wellness policy. And that's by the community. That's not just, you know, school district employees, not just adults. It's meant to be truly a community and participatory process. And that the, one of the other requirements is measuring the effectiveness triannually, so that's every three years. So figuring out, did we achieve the goals of the Wellness Council and the wellness policy and that it's available to the public. So again, it's a very participatory and public process, which means that each wellness policy is really tailored to the needs of the region that it's representative of. So it's been a very collaborative, community-based organization, organizational process, development process. So I'm going to move on to the makeup of our Wellness Council here. But before I do that, again, just as a reminder, our district did a big overhaul of the wellness policy six, seven years ago. I know Trustee Theodore was there. I know Trustee Howard was there. So this has been an ongoing process, but it's really what pushes our wellness policy forward every time we participate in that. So thank you to our trustees who have participated all along. So we're going to pass it over to Adriana to talk about the makeup of our council this year.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adriana. So our Wellness Council this year was comprised of about 30 people total, including students' parents, the school staff, district staff, and the CVUSD Board Trustees. Many of the students were from the District Student Leadership Alliance, or DSLA, run by Superintendent Amati. It's made up of a collection of students, high school students, who provide their perspective on campus and help make better environments within CVUSD at schools. As for our parents and staff, I've noticed there were a wide range of CVUSD schools represented during our meetings, which also was amazing to hear from those who aren't the students themselves, but from the primary adults in those students' lives. There were also multiple district staff and CVUSD Board Trustees present. As a high school student, before getting involved with my community, the only people I knew from the district were Superintendent Amati from her presence on campus, as well as Ms. Theodore, due to some personal background-related things. Yes, and I found it very cool to hear their thoughts and learn a little about some of the behind the scenes that these people partake in to help our schools. For example, Mr. McMaster, who ran this council, provided so much insight about our school's nutrition and wellness I never even knew we needed. Ms. Peratoria as well, I don't believe she's here tonight, but she had in the past invited me to work on the Grading Committee Council, I believe in the 2020-2021 school year during COVID season. And what I witnessed was extremely intriguing and fascinating. I just came to see just a little bit of how many people tirelessly work on the smallest aspects to benefit every student, and we are unaware of just how much work that goes into. I will now move it on to Ms. Meadows for the next slide.
Thank you, Adriana. So as we move into looking at our current plan and the work that the committee did, we're going to be looking through some lenses. And what we think about this is like when you put, you know, your glasses on and things come into focus. You put your sunglasses on, your eyes get some relief. The idea is that we specifically picked very specific lenses through which to look at this work. And so, as you know, the first lens is always our strategic plan, right? Our vision, our mission, what our priorities are. And we've worked really hard over the years to create a strategic plan that's holistic, equity-focused, and is something that can hold no matter what we bring in front of it. It's something that really brings our values to the forefront. So that's always the first lens that we look at any of this work through. The next lens is our equity lens, right? And the idea is that we're, no matter what work we're doing, we're prioritizing access and opportunity. There shouldn't, it shouldn't be difficult to get to access points. That should be a given. That should be the baseline, that there's complete access for anyone. And specifically, the stakeholders who experience disparate outcomes, right? So we're looking for all the ways to open up the pathways, particularly for equity. The next lens is how we do the work, and the idea is that it's both broad and focused. And what that means is that the wellness plan that we work on has to be broad enough to allow autonomy for different programs, but also focused enough to be able to show whether or not we're making progress, right? So the metaphor we use is the, it's kind of like the Constitution, right? It has to be broad enough to give guidance, but also to allow for the needs to be addressed as they change over time in our community, as our community does. And from that lens work, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. McMaster here to talk about the work that we completed in the last couple of years.
Okay, I am back. So last year, we had a few meetings when we got the council relaunched amidst the pandemic and the challenges that were going on. But, you know, we're a district committed to wellness through the support of the board and our leadership, and that's something I think we're very proud of, and we got to strengthen that through this process. So last year's work saw us meet twice. We looked back at our wellness plan and policy, and essentially what we did is we determined how we were going to move forward in our work. And what the council decided is, as opposed to looking at all of the different segments of the wellness plan, we wanted to pick a few focus areas, which are outlined in item number three on the slide. Now, that image is from actually the CDC, and that's a model of wellness and community wellness that our first plan, the first iteration of our plan, is completely modeled off of all those components. So, you know, there's alignment through agencies that have, you know, a lot of background and knowledge. And what we did is we picked out those focus areas. And in every subsequent meeting, what we did, we worked together as a group, but we spent a lot of time in breakout and focus groups. So we allowed participants to focus in on specific areas of the plan that they were interested in or wanted to learn more about or had things to say about. And that spearheaded our work through the four meetings this year, which I will, not quite warp speed, but I will move through a little bit quicker. So our process in our first meeting is reassembled the group. We had some new members. We talked about the work we did the year before and the timeline and path that we needed to follow this year, culminating with a presentation to the board. So the second meeting, and this one I'll pause on a little bit longer, is we actually had the opportunity to look at three specific goals set by the Wellness Council three years ago. And we were able to spend some time looking at tools to measure progress towards those goals. And each of the breakout focus groups gave a rating at the end and then brought it back and discussed with the group. So you can see that of the three goals, two, the focus groups felt were met. And one, the group I was actually involved with, thought, you know, we didn't quite meet the level we were looking for from our goal, but we do feel like there was progress. So that was very promising. In our third meeting, we set new goals, so those are going to be exciting. We're going to elaborate on those a little bit more. And then in our final meeting that we had, we went back to the wellness plan one more time. One more time with, you know, the background of all the conversations, with evaluating the work towards our previous goals and our new goals. And we looked at the language of that, and we wanted to make sure, as Ms. Meadows said, that the wellness plan gave us the direction but didn't obstruct us. I think that was kind of like the main thing. It wasn't obstructing any of our work, and it wasn't undermining any of our work. So that was what we accomplished in the final meeting. And I have, if I was going to keep talking through slides here, I'm going to ask Adriana to come back up and talk about our next slide. So if you could.
The group I participated in during our wellness meetings pertain mostly to the language and word choices that we used in our documents based on pertain mostly to the language and word choices that we used in our documents based on wellness. Although for most of the time during the meetings, my group and I are more focused on nutrition. We sought to be inclusive throughout the documents we made in their wording and general themes where everyone is supported, respected, and acknowledged in our works. Personally, I find myself lucky to have three younger siblings, one attending Proctor Elementary School, Tannen Middle School, and the last at Cache Valley High School with me. I have been able to learn about the foods provided to each school and heard from the students' perspective what they have and what they would possibly want and/or need in their diets, with everything being thoroughly reviewed and corresponding with the rules and regulations of the state and district. I was able to share these perspectives with my group in an attempt to better our menus, in an attempt to include gluten-free, dairy-free, vegetarian, vegan, et cetera. Personally, I am lactose intolerant, so I also prefer not to have any meat in my lunches or meals in general. So the salads that were provided this year for the first time was also very helpful towards me, except most of the time they would only ever serve Caesar or ranch dressing, which I think the ranch was gluten-free, but not lactose-free. So it was a little bit harder for me to eat these types of food. And then they provided an Asian sesame dressing, which helped a lot significantly and was my lunch for a significant part of the year. We also adopted a series of policies, curriculum, and material that the students and I of the council took part in to revise and make new policies and guidelines to better express the core values of the district, as well as meet everyone's standards and needs, including the students, district, state, et cetera. And I will move it, give it up to Mr. McMaster for Group Two.
Excellent. So Group Two, when we looked at new goals to undertake, and that's essentially what these, the series of three slides were, was really to focus in on the, the new focus areas for the next three years. If you recall, we were the group that felt like we didn't meet the goal, but that we had sufficient progress. So that goal actually was, is specifically tied into our strategic plan and our social-emotional priorities. So it's, it's a fantastic goal. And, but we still evaluated it and looked at it and said, you know, we say every student feels safe and valued in that priority. But, you know, we, we, we had to, we had to grow it out more to make sure, you know, belonging inclusiveness was, was highlighted. So when we updated that goal, one of the things we discussed a lot, and going back to the lens of broad but focused, is you, you want to get very actionable, and you want to really drill into specifically what you're going to do. The sites need some autonomy to, to operate within the goal. So, you know, when we talked about what that could look like, what emerged from the parent participants and the student participants and the staff is how important the student voices, you know? Here we are, you know, we're engaging in this process with multiple valued stakeholders. But really, this is about our students. This is about, this, this goal area specifically is about how our students feel on campus. We're devising this plan, and it may seem obvious, but we, we made sure to highlight in our notes and that we'll carry forward is how students need to be involved every step of the way. And we really need to have a pulse on how they're thinking and feeling all along the way to be able to adapt to that. So that was, that was pushed into what the new goals look like and sound like for this group, and certainly going to dictate our work and our focus in this area moving forward. I'm going to ask Ms. Meadows to step in, because she was part of Group Three, and she's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you. So Group Three was about the High School Wellness Center, and that was an easy box to check. And I would have liked to, if there had been a goal exceeded category, I feel like we would have checked it. Because not only do we have a wellness center, but we're in a beautiful building. And that's, again, to your credit as a board for supporting that work. So we looked at each other, and we did not waste time. We said, okay, we're going to make middle school wellness centers now. And so that's really what the, the conversation had been about, not just replicating the High School Wellness Center, but what does a middle school wellness center look like? What are the developmental needs? What are the challenges? So we spent a lot of time in that committee talking about the specific needs for middle school students. And I want to say, our committee had a great balance of special educators and general educators and other folks. So it was a really rich conversation about meeting the needs of all of our students, the behavioral health needs of all of our middle school students. So I was really lucky to have such a rich team of folks. The other pieces we discussed were not just about having these beautiful buildings and ideas, but sustainable funding. How do we do this long-term? We have these new buildings, really get amazing dedicated space, but we need the, we need to have a long-range plan. And so there's a lot of ideas around not just external funding, but, but using internal funding in a more effective way, in more creative ways. And the last piece was really around staff wellness, right? That is the sustainability plan. That's the tier-one sustainability plan for our students is staff wellness and figuring out how do we use the lessons that we're learning, both at the high school and the middle school wellness centers, to inform our approach to staff wellness on all the tiers, right? What do all staff need to feel healthy? And how do we handle situations that come up or needs that come up where there's more specific needs for staff? So again, a really rich discussion. We're working really hard on getting these middle schools launched. We have amazing community partners, as many of you know, to be able to do that in the fall. So that was, again, a really, really productive group of folks that want to keep working on this together. So again, thank you to Trustee Theodore and Trustee Howard for our, you're our inaugural Wellness Center sub, not subcommittee, committee. And so we are continuing the work forward. So it, it is an ongoing project of goodness as we get to develop and be creative about how we serve our students in our district. I'm going to pass it back to Adriana for our closing remarks here.
So I was going to say one piece really quick before bringing Adriana in. And it's just because to try to prevent any confusion, because we've used words like plan, policy, council, and now we have administrative regulation on the board. So our wellness plan exists within an administrative regulation, specifically AR 5030. So I wanted you to know how that all, that all aligns. This, this actually exists within policy for us. And so it's, it's public, and it shows our commitments, and that's where this work all, all kind of arrives. So again, as I said a little bit ago, this plan is really, you know, there, there are elements of staff wellness, as Ms. Meadows just said. There is, you know, there is, you know, requisite deal, requisite amount of that. But this, this is mainly centers on the experience of our students. So what better way to summarize the updated wellness plan than to have a student, our student here, to come back up to, to close us out? So Adriana, please.
As previously mentioned throughout the slides, we've implemented new material regarding our district's wellness and revised the language to better fit each subject. Such as for nutrition, instead of using the word healthy, we would use balanced and nutritious. We also updated the language and presentation of the regulations to be more inclusive and focused on a healthy school environment. Additionally, adding on to what Ms. Meadows previously mentioned in the last slide, Group Three, we included information to help support the expansion of the services offered to students with a focus on wellness centers at our middle schools. I personally have only visited the CVHS Wellness Center a few times, but each time has been a positive experience that gave me time to think and refocus, and eventually continue with class. Or I was provided with options of whether I could simply spend more time alone thinking, I could talk to a counselor, or even a parent. Having these choices, I felt very comfortable, and they repeatedly mentioned confidentiality as well, which was very reassuring. As a high school student, there can be events that are difficult to deal with, and it can be hard to talk to others about it, such as with your friends, parents, et cetera. The Wellness Center is not always seen as a positive place to go to, as many students generally find it as a place to go to when something is bothering them. But there are also many other resources available. Whether it's a place to talk to someone, take some time to think, to de-stress, and more, the Wellness Center can be very positive and a helpful place. And I'm glad to have this available to me anytime throughout the day. And having these facilities available at the middle school campuses may also show those at an earlier age more about what the Wellness Center is and does, providing them with these resources to fall back on when the school can get overwhelming, as well as provide them an earlier perspective as in order to show that the Wellness Center isn't necessarily something that is for a bad reason. It is something to help and something to heal. Thank you. I will hand it back to, I'll hand it back to Mr. McMaster.
This is our last slide. It's the party slide, so I get to present this one. So this is, this is the easy one, the fun one. So we're, you know, again, as a group, we've really spent a lot of time together, really going through fine-tooth comb through the language and through, at these really important priorities. And so the idea is that we, we want to celebrate the accomplishment of the group, the hard work of the group. And really, the, the spirit of the group is bringing forth the voice of the community, right? That is the point of this wellness policy in general, is that we're really trying to unearth what our specific community needs and to put it into policy. And that's a, it's almost a sacred obligation, right? Something really important that gets codified. And that, that's why we bring it to the board, for your advising and approval. And we wanted to make sure that our, our committee got to celebrate their work at the end of the year. So it's in the Wellness Center courtyard tomorrow from three to four. Am I missing anything, Mr. McMaster? Yeah, you're all invited. There you go. Life refreshment is provided. So if you haven't seen the Wellness Center, it's a great time to come peek at it, too. So thank you again for, for all of your support, and Mr. McMaster for his leadership in, in leading this committee for the last few years.
Thank you for a great presentation.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, Adriana, you know, being a part of the District Student Leadership Alliance, when Mr. McMaster asked, like, who wants to participate? Hands went up, and they're so committed. Anytime you want to get smarter, just go and be with these kids. They were amazing. But I wanted to just also share our gratitude with the Cache Valley Education Foundation, because after the event that they held, they actually raised $15,000 for the Middle School Wellness Center, and they added another $5,000. So they're going to give $20,000 to, to the two wellness centers in the middle school. So that's pretty exciting. And I think our, all the work you guys have done to work with the different groups in the community, Sutter Health, has helped us immensely with grants, and also for some support for our staff. That's going to be really great. We do have programs, but I think anything we can add for our staff to support them as well. It's wonderful. Something that, that you said in the presentation, I think that Adriana said, when she was talking about how much she learned through this process, oftentimes, we always send messages out to the community. We forget our own team here, our staff, and our students, who are the clients. And we don't spend as much time with that. So it's really important for us to create opportunities for our students and staff to be involved in, in this sort of way. And I, the last thing I want to say, when we talk about the Wellness Center and all the work, we should be really proud, you should be really proud of what you've done. Eleven social workers for the district our size is unheard of. It's a huge commitment, and it's so, so important. But it's the Wellness Center, it's the social-emotional lessons that you've created, and our teachers are teaching it, the anti-racist, anti-bias lessons. So I just want to remind everybody that it's the whole package. It's not just one piece. And I'm grateful to have this, this team to work with. But thank you, Adriana. It's so awesome to see you.
I, I know it's not fair to say, like, we're post-pandemic, but it, it definitely feels like there's a shift. And I think this, the language around wellness, the investments there in social-emotional learning, that's going to be critical for the next decade, you know? Sort of how we survive what we've just gone through. So thank you for those efforts, Adriana. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I see your mom has her phone, and she probably wants to take this video. But I'm going to ask you a question, if that's okay. I'm curious, as a student in our district, do you feel like you are being heard? Do you feel like students are having a direct impact on this? That on the other side, that what the Wellness Center is becoming is, is student-led or student-driven, I should say?
I'm not sure whether to say that it's student-driven, more so students take advantage of it. I can't really say that these students have pushed for these sort of things. I mentioned earlier, the DSLA, I believe it's the only student group that helps make decisions such as these, which is maybe 10 to 15 students out of one school, Cache Valley High School, or I think there's one middle school right now. But we have come very far. I just don't think the entire student body really knows what's going on. More like, oh, these things popped up, and these things are pretty cool, we should use them. I'm kind of more that way thinking. I have to say no.
Appreciate your leadership, and have a fantastic trip in, in the work you'll be doing this summer. Thank you.
Just very briefly, I just want to thank you, Marian, and thank you, Adrian, and thank you as well, and Nick. Very good job, the Wellness Center. And I was on that committee and really enjoyed being on that committee. And will, if I can, be on it again. Thank you.
You know, I've been around a long time in this district. And I remember back when what the wellness policy really revolved around was whether you could have pizza in a classroom and things like that, or candy at a Halloween party. And so where it's come to now is, you know, the evolution of this is really amazing. You know, this is where it should be. And, you know, I'm really, really looking forward to where it might go in the future, especially if we're fortunate enough to land the medical clinic as an adjunct to the Wellness Center. I think that'll be just spectacular and go to another whole level. So thanks for your report, and I look forward to next year's, actually. And by the way, have a great time in Ecuador, you know?
Yes, thank you very much for the report, and thank you for your time, Adriana. I could sit here and reminisce about the original Wellness Committee all day. I, I just love the work that you've done and how you've led that, the whole process and the beautiful Wellness Center that we have. So I look forward to seeing the next phase. Thank you very much. All right. The next item is the LCAP public hearing. So I am opening the public hearing. Are there any requests to comment on the public hearing? Oh.
Some of the details and technical elements of the LCAP, although I will touch on them briefly, just because I know that the board in particular is very familiar with the process. Just a few highlights in terms of the overview for the Local Control and Accountability Plan. First of all, our philosophy has always been, it's interesting where this is falling on the agenda, because it's just between this tremendous presentation that we have on the Wellness Center, which is what, what we're about, and the budget presentation. And really, that's what the LCAP is, right? It's the place in which we describe the actions that we're taking and how that matches with our budget. And so really, this is a singular document that ensures that when we have our strategic plan, that that's actually being implemented, and that it's a publicly viewable document so that any member of the public can see what we're doing and see how that budget that Ms. Chan, when she presents it, how that translates into our actual actions. And just in terms of our process, as I was mentioning before, there have been a few steps that we've taken this year, including lots of meetings with our educational partners, lots of input. There are several elements that have already been presented, such as the mid-year report that we already shared with the board. There's already been a mid-year budget overview that Ms. Chan has shared, the supplemental template, et cetera. There are also a few steps that are going to be completed this month, including the budget presentation. Ms. Chan has done a lot of these pieces. Also, the Educational Services Work Department, working with the Budget Department, has helped to build the LCAP in its entirety with the input of our various educational partners. And so going through the process really was a collaborative process. We're very proud of the steps that we took. We were mindful of being very inclusive, but at the same time, not wanting to overwhelm the community with too many meetings per individual group. So what we did was we combined the, Ms. Chan was very helpful, and us looking forward and thinking about what all of the different budgets are where we need community engagement. So we spoke about the ESER, the ELOP, et cetera, and some of those pieces to each of these groups, along with the LCAP. So we weren't going in four and five times disrupting, for example, our district, our D-LAC. We weren't disrupting these meetings. But we did meet with a lot of different groups and get their input holistically on each of these different budgets. And you can see this list here. Not only our educational partners, including parent groups, student groups, but also community groups. student groups, but also community groups, such as the DREDF and NAACP. We brought in to get their input as well. And that's guidance that's now a recommendation statewide, but we were proactive in doing that work. In general, the structure of the LCAP has changed marginally. But overall, this is the structure that it follows. It begins with general information, moves into some of the successes and needs, and then some highlights. And then throughout the LCAP, there are four goal areas that describe in detail the different actions. Every place where we're spending, LCAT, Local Control Funding Formula dollars is highlighted along with many of the federal funds as a part of the LCAP, federal addendum are located there. Something that we talked about several years ago is that at the time, our LCAP was longer than the federal budget. It was well over 200 pages. It's still a very long document, but we've shaved off, depending on which year you're comparing us to, 60 to 70 pages from our LCAP. We still have all of the information in there. However, we've tried to make it more friendly to the public, due in part to some structural changes to how the county and the state requires it, but also I think to us collaborating and thinking about how to make our messages succinct and clear as possible. So within the LCAP, also there are the goals and there are the actions. And not only do we report our data outcomes in the LCAP, but we also have narrative responses that give a brief description of the work that's happened, as well as annual update tables that provide a snapshot in terms of how we're spending funds. These are our four goals. Most of the LCAP narrative and most of the actions fall into Goal One. Teaching and learning obviously is a local education agency. The bulk of our work falls there, but there really is significant work that falls within those last three. The positive learning environment, which includes all of the facilities work. It includes our staffing and materials. And we're also very proud of the work that we've done for parent empowerment and student engagement. And that includes work like the work that we've done around wellness and having social workers and elementary counselors, et cetera. So I won't go into each of these items, but within Goal One, these are all of the actions that are funded using LCFF dollars. Within that, there are specific programs that can drill down even further. But these are the types of things that we're funding through the LCAP. And you can see a broad set of work that's done to make sure that every student is able to not just receive an adequate education, but a pathway towards being successful and realizing their fullest potential. So some of the work means making sure that we're giving options so that all students can access the core curriculum. A lot of the work also looks at ways that we can lift up and make sure that students have a college and career pathway beyond high school, things like Avid and Puente. Positive learning environment. We're very proud of the work that's been done with our facilities. I can tell you, our facility inspection tool typically is very strong. This year, it's stronger than usual because we didn't have, you know, using last year's data, we didn't have students on campus, so near perfect scores. And I think our facilities maintenance team needs to be commended because they did use that time proactively to go through and actually, you know, make a lot of repairs and do a lot of maintenance during that time. Oops. Parent engagement. As you know, we've done a lot of innovative work in our district for a while, including our mariachi program, Black Minds Matter, and just the typical parent outreach for every project, every place where we move forward. We do try to be inclusive of our educational partners and that includes parents. So then when we do work, we typically involve parents and students in those projects, just as we saw with our previous presentation. The same being true with student engagement. And this is the section of the LCAP where a lot of our counseling supports, our supports for McKinney-Vento students, social workers, wellness. It says PBIS, but actually we are changing that term. That's a typo there because we have changed it to social emotional learning. All of that work is funded through the LCAP under Goal Four. So in terms of next steps, there will likely be some marginal changes between now and June 22nd to the LCAP. What we're looking at is the feedback that we've gotten from the County Office of Education. I think there are some places where they want paragraphs moved from one area to another. But the feedback that Ms. Chan and I got was that they're very pleased with the overall structure and what's been included. And I think one of the most impressive pieces of our LCAP, as you look at those actions and goals, none of those items should surprise you because they are really well-aligned with the work that we do as a school district. And so when we look at our strategic plan and we compare that to the LCAP, you should see lots of alignment throughout that document. So it's always exciting to go through and to see those items because it speaks to the work being a translation of intentions of the board. So with that, we'll be back in the second meeting of June, hopefully for review and approval from the board. And I'll take any questions if the board has any.
Wow, no questions. Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, now we'll move on to the public hearing for the preliminary budget. I will open the public hearing. Or is it me? It's the budget. I have that effect when it comes to the budget. So this is the 2223 preliminary budget. It seems like it was just last week when I presented May revise and here we go. This is the preliminary budget. Just a reminder of our budget, our budget annual process or cycle, as you can see there. District funds, we have the operating funds and also the capital funds. Okay, so let's start with the general fund revenues. So if you recall, in April, we shared with you, and you've seen it a couple of times in April, the zero-based budgeting by site and department. This is really the outcome of all of that. So we put in all of that information into this, the document that, which is the standard days account code structure. And we're using the web-based application that CDE came up with. And so I apologize if you look through the 122 pages, that the formatting, the lines and everything, some are missing. There's nothing I can do about that. That's because it's actually, we're using the web-based application that CDE came out with this year and we are required to use that for this budget. I know that the previous version is actually, they perfected that, that we've used that for many, many years. I want to say maybe 20 years. And so this is now the newer version, which I'm hoping that in the next few months, they'll really take a look at, a hard look at the formatting, including the numbers that are very, really, really small, that I can't really expand. So the general fund budget, this is combined unrestricted and restricted, looking at where our money is coming from, our revenue, right? Most of it is Local Control Funding Formula, 73%. We get about 24% for other state revenue. And then I have a breakdown in the next few slides. A small percentage for federal and which is 2% and 1% is local. So really looking at where we get most of our funding, it's 97% is from the state. So our total revenue on the general fund is $128.5 million. Out of that, $5.2 million is really for supplemental funds, which is Dr. Ryman shared the LCAP. And so that $5.2 million, along with other actions and goals that really are included in the LCAP document is what you're seeing in some of those, the document. So just looking at the unrestricted general fund, this is the breakdown. So I've shared the LCFF, you know, Local Control Funding Formula sources, $77.6 million. Last week, you approved the resolution for the education protection account. We get about $16 million for that. And so that makes up the total of our Local Control Funding Formula. Other state revenue, we do get lottery. This is the unrestricted side, so it's $1.5 million. We also get the mandated costs, as well as this really big one that you're not used to seeing, discretionary block grant. So that is actually included in the May revise that the governor is proposing. And he set aside $8 billion. And so if we take our enrollment, or in this case, there, I know that they're looking at ADA, and that equates to about $12.3 million. So that's why this other state did increase to 13%. You're used to seeing a smaller percentage from the state on this. Local revenue, we do account for interest that we receive. All of our funds are actually invested by the county. And so we do get a small amount for that while it sits in the county treasurer's office. We do get local revenue as well as ROP funding. On the restricted side, federal funds and other state, as you can see, special ed, we do get about $1.7 million. We Title I, Title II, Title III combined of close to $800,000 and other state. That includes special ed as well. This is the AB 602, as well as restricted lottery. This restricted lottery is, we can only use that for instructional supplies. CTEIG incentive grant, we are really grateful for our ROP. So that they actively seek for grants. And so this one is actually, my understanding is, we are actually going to get an increase in the current year for the CTEIG because of the work that ROP is doing, as well as a strong workforce grant. And then this is a paper-only cost, costers on behalf, that we do need to record in our revenue, as well as expenditures, but we don't actually get the cash. The state is requiring us to record their portion of what we, of the stirs on behalf that they pay for. For the expenditures unrestricted and restricted, we have 83% of our expenditures is on personnel and then the 17%, which is non-personnel, and we have a breakdown there for you. And, you know, that includes utilities as well as a professional development, that service pass-through that makes up that $19.8 million. So this is a slide that I, we share from time to time, the contribution to special ed. We do, our special ed expenditures is 20, almost $21 million. We do get funding from the federal, which makes up about 7.53%. State puts in about 42.38% and the contribution is from the general fund, which is 10.5 million or 50%. It's still, this does not include the SELPA admin because that is, this is really just our, our special ed expenditures. I do want to note, this 50.09% you're used to seeing about 51 or 52%. And the reason why it's 50.09 is because the state is making an effort to put in more in the AB 602. So a couple of years ago, the rate was about 300, went up to 500. Now for this 2223, it's actually $820, which is really good for us. Costers and call purs, you've seen this before. This is all funds from 1314 all the way to 2022, 23. And then looking at the components of ending fund balance. So we have our revenue and then expenditures, and now we're looking at components of the ending fund balance. A $24 million is huge compared to previous years. And that's because of what I highlighted earlier is the discretionary funds. Or yes, the one-time discretionary funds of $12.3 million that really increased the ending fund balance. We, as, every year, we set aside funds for the revolving cash, stores, prepaid expenses, as well as all the legally restricted. These are grants that we need to keep, that are restricted, came into us restricted. And so we do need to keep them in those restricted funding. And any unspent funds from these grants, we do, we are required to keep them in those funds and not transfer them anywhere else. Our reserve for economic uncertainties is close to $8 million, which is about 6.91% of our expenditures. But if you take a look at the committed, so these are four different items here that we're committing. And the reason for this is because for 2223, we're on test one. And so we are not allowed to go over 10% of our reserves. So what we are doing is really committing the funds, that the, most of the funds that the state, from the one-time discretionary funds. Because as you mentioned, as I mentioned, this is from the May revision, right? So the governor is still in negotiations with the state and the assembly. And so we won't really know what the enacted budget looks like until it is adopted, which is in the next couple of weeks. So any changes to what we put in, including the one-time discretionary funds and the other ADA relief or the three prior year enrollment information, if any of the, any changes, we will report to you in August when we update the budget at the 45-day revise. Our multi-year projections, these are our key assumptions that I've noted here, including, of course, the discretionary funds of $12.3 million. The COLA is in 2223 is 6.56%. And there is COLA in 2324, 2425 from the Department of Finance. But in this budget, it's actually, we did not assume a COLA in this budget. The 20, the last line there for 2223 is the additional LCFF investment for all grade span. And that's the increase, and that is the $2.1 billion that the governor is setting aside to increase the base. So this is what our multi-year projections look like. We've included the estimated actuals, which is in the current year, 2122, as well as looking at 2223 and the two out years. So as you can see, the revenue did increase in the LCFF from the current year compared to the next year. And that's because of the ADA relief, the 6.56% COLA, as well as the three average prior year ADA. The other state, it also went up from 24.4 to 31.1 because of that one-time discretionary funds. All of our expenditures and their dis salaries and benefits, we assumed the step-in column only in this budget for 2223 and the two out years. At the bottom of our, which is the percentage there, so the 2223, we're at 6.91% after we committed the $14.6 million. And in the out years, you're seeing an 8.31%. And in the out years, you're seeing 8.37 and 9.06 in 2425, and again, committing that $14.6 million until we have a final budget at the state level. Other funds, 2223 budget, so you're seeing some Fund VIII and Fund XVII, we don't have a budget, that's actually because we, for Fund VIII, the Student Activity Special Reserve, that's for our student body funds, we don't budget until we actually receive the funds. And then Fund XVII, it's a carryover of our, the money that we've set aside for net OPEB assets, and then the rest of the funds do have a budget, including the special ed pass-through, monies that we, we receive for other districts, we receive, and then we in turn give them back to, or send them back to participating districts. And then we have the self-insurance, which is the last line there, self-insurance fund for $1.5 million. So all of our funds, other funds, what we have is a total of 55 point, almost $55.5 million. Our next steps will be, as Mr., or Dr. Ryman mentioned, that we'll bring this back to you, along with the LCAP, for approval at the next meeting on the 22nd. And then we, in August, we are going to present to you the updated information from the, from the enacted budget, and then in September, we'll be the 2122, un-audited actuals. Questions?
A couple of small questions. You know, I noticed that our unduplicated account had crept up to 30%. Is that in the out years? I mean, that's really the highest I've ever seen it.
Yes, that's correct. So I believe we started at 23% years ago, and then every year, it goes up, and that's part of the work that we do, especially this year, we, we are encouraging families to fill out the forms, the free and reduced forms. If not, if they're not comfortable filling out the form, because we do have families who are not filling out the forms, we ask them to fill out the alternative form, alternative income form.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, now with the change, if they do actually change the amount for, who qualifies for economically disadvantaged, which is something they're talking about, that's even gonna
Yes, increase.
Increase our
Yes, there is
Our numbers.
There is a proposal to take a look at that, and not use the federal
Yes.
Some guidelines.
Yeah.
It's actually, they're going to look at the state of California because of the, our, yes, our increase in
It really makes no sense to use the, especially in the Bay Area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Exactly.
It may be underreported, but that's the biggest I've ever seen that number.
Correct. Yes.
Never, we've never cracked 30.
We, yes.
We're usually in the 25, 26, maybe 27. That's a significant increase in that, it's more money into us, but I was wondering how we were getting there, because our ability to track this is, has been eroded somewhat.
Correct, yes, because of the free meals.
I really do want to give kudos to Ms. Chan and Sarah, our nutrition director. I think all of the things they've done to get the message out, because we don't have to fill out the, because of child nutrition, so, good job.
My second question was, I noticed we do have, what, $2 million or something, sequestered for textbook adoption, but it's the same $2 million over all three out years, you know? So do we have a, an adoption plan somewhere where we would spend that money, or what? It seems like that should be captured there somewhere.
We do have an adoption calendar, the state actually lays out when the different subject areas are to be adopted, so we could share that with you, if it's of interest.
I want to say, the reason, this, the first time we now have, are setting aside money, is because we had always saved money for instructional materials and adoptions, and we got rid of it, and now we're in a place like, oh, we have to spend a million and a half on just one, and then we don't have the money. So what we'll have to do is, I know that the plan, this is not enough for all of our adoptions, I will say, at all. So we'll bring the plan to you.
As I say, we haven't programmed that at all, at least not in the budget.
Yeah, we never, we haven't had it. So at the next meeting, I would like to share with you, we have it, you should see how much money we're gonna have to spend in the next few years, because we have not adopted new curriculum, and some of our curriculum, we must adopt.
Thank you, Mike.
So going back to Fund 13 and Cafeteria, I know that the, in Congress, the waiver for, the USDA waiver that's allowed for the last two years, that didn't get approved this year, right? There might be a push to do it, but then, not backfill, but the state of California has come in, right? I would be curious, and I could just ask my colleagues at a future date, maybe we could agendize this or look into it, but the changing dynamics of how we run child nutrition in light of this change in public policy, I would be curious to know, because we're not asking for revenue from families, and it seems like this is, the state of California is going to make this a permanent change. So what does that make, how does our nutrition program look like going into the future?
So with the USDA waiver, we're actually benefiting because of all the free meals, so our revenue increased, and so we can, we expect that to continue every year with the universal free meals that the state is going to backfill. One of the changes that, and that's actually something that we need to start working with our, with our site principals, is the change from USDA waiver that we're not required to collect information, so they just come through the line and get meals, but in this case, the state, even though, because of the funds that they're going to pay for, whatever the difference from the federal will reimburse us, and they'll cover the difference. Now we're back to collecting information, like a student ID, because we do need to know the eligibility. And so that's the change that our students are not used to, and our families are not going to be used to, so.
You alluded to the unduplicated account, so it seems like in some ways, as, you know, policymakers in Sacramento and DC, there's going to have to be a rethink of how we measure those things, right?
Yeah, because students really appreciate it, not having to do that.
I think it would be helpful if the feds would raise the reimbursement per lunch, because they have not done that, and that limits us in what we can put on the table regardless. So that would, to me, is by far the more important thing, is to get them to recognize that food costs money, especially right now. So this program could actually wind up costing us money. I don't know if it has yet, but I worry about that, that the reimbursement from the state and the feds is not going to cover the price of the meal, and will be taken yet of a general fund.
If this, yeah, so currently, when the governor's proposed budget is actually, it's already included that they will backfill, so there shouldn't be a contribu, there, we don't, at this time, there is no expectation for districts to cover it out of the general fund, because there is money in the proposed budget for, for the, to backfill. But when the state runs out of money, then, right? So that is a question. So just to give you an idea of how much we are getting from the federal, $2.61 for a meal. That's, that's, that's breakfast, and then $4.56 for lunch.
Thank you for the report.
Yes, thank you, that was a great report. All right, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
We've been at the same places, so I won't say graduations and commencements and advancements, so it's been wonderful. I wanted to just let you know that Assemblymember Quirk is actually doing a Women of the Year event, and they're gonna honor Alisa Desai, our Teacher of the Year from last year. The event was supposed to be a couple of weeks ago, and I had it on my calendar, but they changed it. It is on June 11th, from 2:00 to 4:00, it's at the Dirty Bird Lounge. That's what it's called. So I just wanted you to know that, if you are available and want to attend, it'll be outside, it'll be nice. And then June 14th, we have our strategic planning meeting, and June 21st, I think we're planning a special meeting, and then I, we did get some, the information back from Harvard, so we have our ad hoc meeting next week, and then we'll, if we need to update you after that. And summer school starts Monday, and then masking, we just sent out a message that the county is asking, strong, I mean, that we're gonna have to wear a mask, starting tomorrow in summer school and on facilities. And I think it's great that we are always just following the Health Department guidelines.
That's it for me. I'll tell you, I sat in my car today, before coming in, like, putting my mask on, taking off today, like, trying to decide, what am I gonna do, because I'm paranoid right now, but here I am. Mike?
Sorry to be confused, so we are meeting on the 14th. Okay, okay. Castro Valley Adult and Career Education Ceremony for those who received diplomas and passed the GED, I was there yesterday, that was so fantastic, and just loved hearing the personal stories about the, the personal struggles that a lot of people had to overcome, you know, to hear working mothers talk about what it meant to them to go back and graduate, that just, that felt good. So I just, what a special community we have there, and I'm happy that this district is committed to that, and also was able to go to the retirement celebration, celebration, which was fantastic, and really made you sort of feel the heart of the district, just hearing the personal stories from everyone, and it's reassuring to hear why people like to work for our district, right? So that was great, and just, I want to make a shout out to our student activists who were leading the Castro Valley Pride Event, the rally at the corner of Castro Valley Boulevard in Redwood yesterday, spent a few minutes with them, and it's really gratifying to know that those are our students, leading that in our community. That's it.
Well, I think we all attended a lot of things in the last week, only a week since our last board meeting, so I won't go through those really. I will be gone from June 14th to June 20th, but I'll be available by email or telephone. And on the 16th, I will attend the ROP meeting by, thanks.
Of course, we all tried to attend all the graduations. I attended the Redwood graduation, I think that was the first one, then Creekside, then Castro Valley High School, CVHS, then the adult school. I just have to say, all of the ceremonies were really beautiful, it's always the happiest day in these schools, people are beaming and smiling, and you could just feel all the love and the goodness of those days, and I just love the graduations. The most heartwarming ones are the ones at adult school, where you have people who have jobs and children and other family obligations, and somehow still work to get their high school diplomas, with all of that going on. They always have great stories that are just so inspiring. And then I was able to go to the retirement also, in a beautiful location, at Adobe Center, it was really nice, and that's always such a happy thing to see too, although we will miss a lot of those people for all the years of service that they had. And I guess I had my own retirement as well, and these are just, I don't know if anybody's online, but here's the tassels from the three, you know, from the Redwood, from Castro Valley High, and from the adult school. So, just carrying them with me, because they're so good. Thank you.
All right, and I was with all of you at all of the graduations, and I attended, there was a candlelight vigil on Saturday, last Saturday night, for the shooting victims in Texas, so I attended that. And I will be on the road from Sunday till next Sunday, so don't text me, don't email me. But that's us, yeah. All right?
Yes, good luck.
Yes. And meeting adjourned?